If you would all please scan and join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the fair competition and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful penitentiaries united by a vision still, where equal opportunity and justice for all is our ideal. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Felkin?
Here.
And at this time if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented?
I would like to, uh, please, I'd like to add to the agenda if possible. Um, under the closed session, um, two weeks ago, or two months, uh, meetings ago, excuse me, um, we had talked about, uh, going into closed session for the, uh, city manager's evaluation. And, uh, I've been asked several times, and I've communicated with a couple council people too, um, and I, and I feel that because of how we came out and the misunderstanding that we had a consent, um, I, I do feel that we need to, uh, and we had stated that we would go back into closed session, we'd have another closed session, and, uh, finish up where we were. And, uh, I feel that, uh, I would like to have that added to our closed session, uh, with the, uh, what's, is on our agenda right now.
Well, um, we have been following the process and, um, we didn't feel as though we were ready yet to go back into closed session to continue that discussion until, um, the city manager has an opportunity to, uh, prepare, prepare for their meeting with the council. And so we were gonna put it on the next meeting's agenda. With schedules being what they were, we met with, um, Marcus and shared the outcome of the, um, evaluation, and then we need to provide him an opportunity to prepare for that session with us.
I was without divulging what we did in closed session. I was under the impression that we were going to meet as a council again in closed session and continue our discussion. And, um, there was a misunderstanding that there was a consensus because I didn't feel there was a consensus. And so I just think that, uh, we should clear that matter up in front of the public.
Is there, um, is there going on another item? Is there a way to, to add that as a second item since we're already going into closed session and, um, have that be part of the closed session, the update?
Periodic personnel evaluations, um, are an exception to the Open Meetings Act, but it is not the council's right to go into closed session, I should say, let me rephrase that. The council has to agree to it, but it has to be at the written request or the request of the employee. So, and that request can be rescinded at any time, in which case then you have to come back into open session.
So then that would be Marcus making that, uh, request, and he has requested the time to prepare for that session in two weeks?
Well, whether it's, whether it's tonight or two weeks, it has to be at the request of the, yes, of the individual, of the employee, right? Um, the statute, the statute doesn't require it to be in writing. I generally like it, like it to be in writing for purposes of a, of a written record.
So the initial request was, that was specific to that meeting?
That, I, I certainly would, um, I certainly would like it from my perspective, um, for the city's perspective, to have each request be its own separate request for, because there would have to be a motion to adjourn to closed session at the request of that employee.
Okay, so, um...
So is this something that will be forthcoming then, um, as you said at the next meeting?
Yeah, at the next meeting. So, um, if that be said by the attorney, um, I would say that we want, uh, on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas, please, I'd support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
No.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we will go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment. And if you would, when you come to the podium, if you would say your name and your address and also write it for Sandy, she would greatly appreciate it. And if you would keep your minutes, uh, excuse me, your time to three minutes or less.
Hello, my name is Richie Harris. I live at 124 and a half Air Street. And I came to tell you tonight that we were unable to have our golf on the ice for the first time in 24 years. We had to cancel everything just out of the safety factor of, we went down to the lake, we actually walked around, decided that just wasn't safe. If I can't see people out there, I don't want them out there, just in case something, God forbid, happened, but things like that do happen. So, we're gonna do a redo on Saturday. Can't scrap it. Did get a chance to meet some of the, uh, winter athletes from Area 32, went to the winter games for the first time in three years. They brought home six gold medals, five silver medals, and two bronze medals. Um, one little girl was so proud that she had ran in the 400 meter small snowshoe and the 800 meter and won a gold in both. So, it was quite amazing. The other thing I'm here for, unfortunately, is a red note for a couple of weeks ago in the paper, and I happened to have been out in the parking lot and I got really sick and didn't make it indoors, unfortunately. But, we, um, after you repealed the ethics ordinance, I reached out to a couple of the other people that got letters from the city that said that, you know, they were repealed and because of ordinance had been repealed, our claims had been dismissed. Well, I was a little frustrated by that, so I reached out to the other two people, being Mr., uh, Mr. Maxwell and Kathy Williams, found out who was all involved, got them together at a meeting at a place that was convenient for everybody. We met and we decided that we would draft a letter, which I sent to the city manager. I got a response from Mr. Petcher, and it was, in the letter, I had asked that we either have a meeting with Mr. Petcher or with Mr. Petcher and the council. We were just looking for some answers. I know the night that was repealed, the mayor said, "If you don't like what's going on, there is, go see the prosecutor." You know, you can go that way. Well, we were trying to save the money and not get into any litigation. So, after Mr. Petcher said that he would meet with us, we got together again, we met, came up, compared everybody's ethics violations to see what was, you know, what we thought was a good agenda. So, we went to the meeting with Mr. Petcher. When we got there, I asked him if I could record the meeting, just so we had some reference. He told me no, as at the meeting, obviously the council wasn't notified because the only people there were Mr. Petcher and your HR person. So, I was told that I couldn't record it. That was fine. So we got into some questions and asked him, you know, about a few different situations. At that time, one of the questions, we were informed that Mr. Malama must have misinterpreted the way things were used back when you did the ethics violation against Mr., uh, Mr. Goleck. Well, but our cases didn't have anything to do with any of that, so virtually they were worthless, and if we thought we really wanted to do something, seek litigation. So then I get home, and I'm a little concerned about that, and then I read this coming out in the paper, that Ms. Shippers says that she was informed through hearsay that she saw or heard that we were having secret meetings. Well, we found a place that was convenient because Ms. Williams doesn't get around very well. There was an office downtown, and I'll tell you who, it was at one of the local attorneys. He wasn't even there for the first part of the meeting. He came after we were there. His wife came down and let us in, so he wasn't involved in anything that I had been doing. After it was over, I went out and sat on the sidewalk, like I, you know, I smoke, so I went out on the sidewalk and enjoyed the cold weather and had a cigarette, waiting for Mr. Maxwell to give me a ride home. Saw a car back out of a parking spot across the street, and another one come down a side street and into Herman's they went, and I thought, huh, must be having a damage control meeting. And it's just sad to think that the only way we're gonna get any true real answers to the questions that we ask is to have to start litigation. Not wanting to cost the city any money, but we have no other choice. Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council, um, with respect to the golf on the ice, um, event, council did authorize placement of signage particular to the date that's come and gone. Um, I know that we're in the middle of public comment here, as it would be appropriate, should council wish to, um, allow the signage to occur this coming weekend, to make a motion to do so accordingly.
Where would we do that at?
Um, we could do that at the end of the agenda, or you could simply do it now.
Can we do it now?
Yeah.
Okay, did someone make a motion?
Um, make a motion that we approved the request for the golf on the ice event in the same manner we did last time, changing the dates to this, this Saturday, um, the 21st of February.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And then we'll move to the approval of the consent agenda for the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 2nd. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that moves us into the community spotlight, if you'd be, Marcus, would you like to do the introduction?
I would, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, this evening, there are actually two folks there. Uh, one is Kerry Thompson, uh, the interim director for the Cadillac Wexford Transit Authority, uh, here to introduce herself to the community and make a brief presentation to council. Also, uh, sitting in, uh, in the audience is Stephen King, uh, the city's appointee to the board.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to be here. Um, my name's Kerry Thompson, and I am the interim director for Cadillac Wexford Transit. Um, just to give you a little background on me, so you can get to know me, um, I actually came from another transit right before this. I worked for Beta, which is the transit that covers Grant's, I was in Millwall County. Um, and I was actually there 16 years. Um, I finished off as their business development director and external relations. And so I'm really happy to be here in Cadillac, and I think that you guys can look forward to some great things with the public. So, just kinda, kinda get into my presentation. There we go. So, um, just in case, um, you don't know, um, I'm gonna go through a little bit of the service model. So, we're a public entity that transports people in Wexford County, residents and visitors. We have a five-member board and one county liaison that comes to the meetings with Mark Howey, uh, and that's listeners. Uh, we have 43 employees and 23 buses, and with those employees and buses, we transport about 112,000 rides annually. Uh, and we do that through our demand response service and annual contracts. And when I say annual contracts, um, that usually is contracts with groups like Community Mental Health or group homes to do special kind of service with any of the list. So, take a little background. Um, as I'm sure you all know, um, it's the newspaper, but Cadillac Wexford Transit has kinda had a bumpy year. Um, they had an executive director retire, and then we got a brand-new board, the CWTA, um, who was not as loyal to transit as they wanted to be, and so we were working through that education process. And I think that we have a really solid, um, foundation to start with, the service delivery at CWTA is pretty good. Um, but we do kind of have a long way to go as far as what we could do to meet community needs. I think that we could become, um, you know, a break spot and something that can help out of, uh, for public transit. And so we've talked a lot, I have with the board, about reinventing public transit in Wexford County. And we talked about doing that through creating a new vision, because you can't get, where you're going without a roadmap, obviously. Um, creating a solid foundation so that not just a little breeze is gonna knock us over. Do I have to speak into that for the TV?
Just for the TV, yeah.
Okay. I'm 5'2", I never liked these things. Okay. Sorry, can you hear me? So, um, and then we're also gonna invest in, um, technology this year. Uh, CWTA is somewhere right in the 1990s as far as technology goes, so we're gonna try to bring that up to speed, and then other ways that we can meet community needs. That's kinda what we're gonna talk about. So, when I talk about, um, the vision or a roadmap, um, part of that, and I think the most important part, is, um, creating a culture that reflects accountability and transparency. Um, and that's something, as I read through some of the articles, um, in the paper, it sounds like that's what the community thought that they were lacking. Um, and so that's a very important aspect of this. Um, as a public entity, and we accept millage dollars, state dollars, and federal dollars, it's really important to be transparent. I don't want any of you guessing what we're doing over there, and so it's my job to get out in front of all of you and let you know what we're doing, hence why I'm here tonight. So this is just one of many. Um, but a part of that direction is also empowering our employees. I found when I got to CWTA, um, I have an absolutely wonderful staff, but they were not really empowered to do the things that they need to do. And what I mean by that is, it was not a culture of innovation, creativity, it was, we're gonna do the same things because this is what we've always done. And those things do work, um, and it creates, like I said, a solid foundation, but I think that they could be a whole lot more in this community than what they currently are. And so, we're working on that and promoting innovation with the managers. Um, community partnerships, I think we should have a lot more of those. I have people reaching out to me left and right, so I know the need is there, um, so I'm excited to be able to do that. And then actually providing service that meets the resident's lifestyle. So, um, we have two types of riders in public transits. You have people that are dependent on the system, and you never want to forget them. They are your core ridership, so they're people that cannot drive for a variety of reasons. But we also wanna be able to attract choice riders. They have a choice. They have a car at home, but there may be some different ways, um, that we can be of value to them. So, um, we can talk a little bit more about that, but that's kinda the direction that we are going. All right, so a firm foundation. Um, obviously a firm foundation starts with finances, right? So, um, CWTA's budget at the end of the year is tight. And when I say tight, I mean like they have to ask me for permission the last two months of the year to buy a pencil, okay? I came in November, I got this, this great welcome. Welcome, we have no money. That's, okay. So, um, over the next year or two years, we're gonna work on, um, developing some plans to kinda help with that. And we have started, um, we did dispose of an asset, um, in our fleet that we no longer needed to pay off some long-term, um, debt. Um, we, right now, are in the process of starting departmental budgets and controls, and you would think that that is a very simple thing that everyone would have, but they do not have one. Uh, when I asked about budgets, all they have is, uh, the state of Michigan budget, uh, which, from working in transit for a long time, I know that that is really, um, your best guess 18 months out as to where you'll be. And no one has a crystal ball, so no one really knows where they'll be in 18 months. And so, it shouldn't be the budget you're actually operating off of, it should just be your guide. And so, uh, we're working on those, um, and better controls within those departments. Uh, when I talked a little bit about employee empowerment, this helps them with that. So, if you're running a department and you don't know what your costs actually are, that makes it next to impossible to do a really great job. You know, it's, uh, kinda aiming at a target that's not there. And so, um, these departmental budgets will be great for us, and it also allow me, um, to hold the managers accountable. So I say, this is your budget, you know, if you're over or short or whatever that goes on with it, I can hold them accountable to say, "Why are we having this issue?" So we can solve it. Um, we're going to improve some policies and procedures, and you wouldn't really think that those go directly to the bottom line, but they do. Um, I'll give you an example. Uh, we have something called a no-show policy. And what that means is, um, no-shows are when a passenger calls up, schedules a ride, and then isn't there when we go to pick them up. So that wastes fuel, driver's time, wear and tear on the buses, those kinda things. And so, there's quite a few policies like that that are internal that we'll be able to tighten down and, and save some money to the bottom line as well. Um, I'm also gonna look this year at additional revenue streams, and I have quite a few ideas about this, but, um, to start with, I'll give you an example, we're talking about advertising on buses. This is something I've done in another transit very successfully, and it's a really easy program to employ. Um, and what it can help us do is just give us a little more flexibility in the budget, so at the end of the year, we're not scraping along, because truly, to be a healthy organization, we should probably have 60 days of operating capital, just in case MDOT has a strike or who knows what goes on at the state level and we don't get funding for a while. It would be terrible, since we, um, our service delivery business, to have to cut that off. We don't make widgets, so we just do service delivery, so I had to make sure that we're out on the street and protecting us to make sure that that happens. Internal and external communication strategies, that's another, um, huge piece of a firm foundation, and I'm a strong believer in that. Um, so, our employees are starting to notice things that are different with, uh, since November when I arrived. And one of those is, is that we have face-to-face meetings with our frontline employees on a regular base, basis, and I mean in a group. And so we get them together quarterly, and we just started this, and we talk about where we're going and how we're gonna get there, and what that means to them. Um, because if you have a frontline staff that's not coming along with you, you're not going anywhere. And so, um, we are going to work hard at that. Um, it also provides a forum for them to share their ideas. A lot of times, the best ideas come from your frontline. You don't need a consultant, they can tell you what it is you need to do. And so we have to provide them a, a space to be able to do that, and they're, they're starting to, um, you know, uh, feel like they trust me enough to get, get out and do that, so that's great. Um, and then more community interaction and promoting growth in this area, I'd love to be able to help with that. Okay, so technology. So we're about to move from about 1992 to 2015, um, and we're gonna do that by putting in, um, mobile data terminals and new dispatch software, um, at CWTA. So, this is a fully funded project through state and federal grants, and, um, it really comes from the proceeds of the sale of the old administration building. Um, when they sold that, what typically happens is that money goes back to MDOT and gets redistributed. But we don't want that. We wanna keep our dollars here, in Wexford County, working for us, right? So, um, you'd think it was a little easier, but we did actually convince them to keep it here, which was great. Um, and now, I just finally, yesterday, got the authorization saying, "Yep, you can absolutely go forward on this." And so what this will do, I'm gonna give you an example, if you are a passenger and you call in, right now, when you call in, dispatch has to rely on the radio, and their skill sets, which are pretty good, I mean, I don't think I could dispatch, but, to know exactly where the buses are, okay? And so, with the new system, when you call in, the dispatchers will actually be able to see on a big screen in their office, all the buses and where they are. So they'll be able to pick the bus that's closest and route that, and the system actually helps them figure out where the best place to fit things in. There are so many different, um, kind of snags that can come along the way as you're doing this, like how long it takes to load a wheelchair. You have some passengers that maybe have, um, a walker, and they're a little slower to get out. So the system actually can add in, based on experience, how long it takes the passenger to get on the bus, allowing us to be more accurate in giving times for people. So we can say, "It's gonna pick you up at this time," and be a lot more accurate than we used to be able to. It also will show where we can cut the fat out of the system. And you know, if you talk to my frontline staff, "No, they're busy, there's, there's no fat in the system." There absolutely is. It's just by routing it more efficiently that we'll be able to say, "Look, we can do with the same number of hours, more service if we, you know, route things a little bit differently." So, we're really excited about that. It also reduces waste, um, and it's easier on the drivers. So right now, we ask drivers to do a lot. They're listening to the radio, they're getting their calls, they're writing them down, they're boarding passengers, they're managing their door, they're managing their fare box, I mean, the list goes on and on. And this way, it'll be all automated on this tablet in their vehicle that gets sent directly out from the dispatch. So it's all automated. Um, so, uh, I'm not used to doing this with no one asking questions, so if you need to ask questions, feel free. So this would be a big innovation for us. Um, it also allows us to communicate better with a mobile workforce, which can be a real challenge, so, all right. One other thing we're trying to do, and we're actually starting to do this, is, we're trying to leverage available resources, so a lot of things are right in front of us and free, and we never take advantage of them. So, CWTA did not have a Twitter account, they didn't have Facebook, and no one really used LinkedIn for professional, um, development. And so, they're all free. Um, we started a Facebook and Twitter account for CWTA, so people can kinda see where, what's going on with us. Um, and we're gonna use it for service alerts. So if there's a road that's closed, or if there's a storm, or, you know, just we have to shut down service, those are things that we can put out on this, and they're absolutely free to us. So it's just a better way to communicate with the public. Uh, we're also starting to take advantage of press releases with the Cadillac News and sharing kinda what's going on, um, because, again, I don't want them guessing either. I think it should be very transparent, and they should be able to get in front of us and ask the questions that they need to ask. Um, and then we are also working on a new website, and part of that website, with the new dispatch software, will have a scheduling portal, making it easier for passengers, either individual passengers or groups, to go on and schedule their rides. And so what they do is they put in where they wanna go, what time they need to get there, that automatically goes to dispatch, who's manning that, they look it up, see if it works, and if it does, they send back a confirmation, if it doesn't, um, they send back another time, so an alternate time. The other thing I should tell you that the system does, which is wonderful, is it will actually call people, because it has GPS in it, it will call the next rider when you're 10 minutes out. So people don't have to stand out in the cold for 25 minutes. That is huge. If they have a cellphone or a home phone or wherever it is they're going, we can actually call the facility and say, "You're 10 minutes, we're 10 minutes away, put your shoes and coat on," kinda thing.
Have the ability to text?
Um, we are looking at that. We, there are other transits that have the ability to text, but it's a little clunky right, clunky right now, and so, I wanna make sure if we do put it out, that it's right the first time. And so we are looking at that, but right now, we'll do email, and I do think it has an application for your cellphone, even if you can access, um, our current website doesn't have mobile applications, which means it doesn't, it doesn't convert well to cellphones or tablets. But, um, the new one will, it'll automatically convert, and so if you're on your cellphone, you can schedule a ride from there. So it's, it's similar to texting. All right, and then last, uh, meeting community needs. So, um, we've been talking about bikes on buses. Uh, when I first got to CWTA, I said, "Where are all the bike racks?" Like my first day, and everybody looked at me, and I'm like, "What are you talking about?" So, um, we, uh, have some funding to get bike racks for buses, um, through a grant program, and so we're gonna start that this year, we'll hopefully get probably four, five outfitted, uh, with bike racks, and be able to, um, help people out. So, we've met with a cycling club, and we don't have a plan completely formulated yet, so I've only met with them once, but, um, I think there's some real opportunity to tap into the trail systems here and get people that normally wouldn't ride the bus out and have, enjoying themselves. You know, maybe they can't make the entire bike trip, and they bike one way and then bus back, um, but I think that there's some, and there's some real interest in that. So we're excited about that. And then, uh, we want more participation with students. We've been working with the Y to see if we can expand their team program. Um, I'm a big proponent of getting students on buses, because typically, um, in rural areas, they don't make the transition between yellow school bus to public transportation. You go yellow school bus to cop. go yellow school bus to car. And I actually have a almost 17-year-old, this week she turns 17, and usually it's a little slower to get her car, because she could get around. And so the more options that we provide, the less parents have to buy, you know, buy cars and pay insurance and do all of those kind of things. And those are things that public transportation should be doing anyway, is helping with some of those programs. And so I'm hoping to be able to start more of those. And then collaborate with businesses and local festivals. Like I said, we haven't done a whole lot of that in the past, if anything, and I think that we should start talking and see where we can add value in the community. And like I said, expanding community partnerships. So, and that's it. So I'd love to answer questions if you have any.
Well, Carrie, I think that your update was great.
Thank you.
And we hope that as you continue your work, that we can hope to hear regular presentations.
That would be great.
That would be very exciting. I think that the idea of taking advantage of the social network is a great idea.
And they're free.
As you say, it's free.
But you're going to reach a lot of people.
Yeah, a lot of people.
So that's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is that we have an appointment.
Yes, tonight's being recommended that Barb Johns be reappointed to the Board of Review for a two-year term to expire on March 1st, 2017, and it's noteworthy that she has been serving since 6/1 of 1998 on the Board of Review. She's trained.
She knows what to do.
She is.
You probably want to make that motion, then.
I do, I do.
And the support.
She's going to go add something else. Quite often, people, when they're talking about their taxes, aren't always in the best mood. And I observed this lady one time, well, more than one time. And the first thing she does is what I used to do when a parent came in and believed that something was going on unfair in the school, I'd offer them a piece of candy or a cookie. And she's, without any coaching or anything, first thing she does is she just reaches out to them and talks to them in a very calm manner, and yeah, she's... That's that value, that value plus that she brings to a committee, and that's hard to find. You're always looking for the value, but then when you get that value plus and that ability to communicate with people and to talk to them when they're not always in the best humor is a real talent, and she definitely has that.
It's very nice of you to say that.
She does. And she's not shy to tell them she either changed their diaper, or she knew, she danced with her uncle. I mean, she has a tie to the people, but he's right, someone will come in stressed, and the next thing, they're smiling and they're relaxed. So I am very excited to be making a motion to reappoint Barb Johns for two additional years for her term on the Board of Review, which would expire March 1st, 2017. Support.
Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
You see, Carrie.
Okay, the next thing is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This first item, from time to time, we've brought forward to the city council, and we've gotten somewhat of a giggle over what it's called. It's our atomic absorption machine. And as I mentioned before, I'll mention again, if you need some specifics about what this machine does, Jeffrey Deetland, our utilities director, can certainly add that this evening. What we are looking at doing this evening, however, is adding an additional two-year service plan, or basic service plan, to keep the machine running and operating for the next couple of years before it actually is then scheduled for replacement. We have, again, done this in the past, maintaining the machine with the PerkinElmer Company. It is a PerkinElmer atomic absorption machine. The total two-year price is $18,612, with $9,168 attributed to year one and $9,444 attributed to year two. This is essentially, it's a sole-source servicing contract by the manufacturer itself, so we would be looking for a waiver of competitive bidding accordingly, and the recommendation to award it to PerkinElmer for the two-year extended basic service plan. And again, if anyone's interested in some of the basics on what exactly it does, Jeff is here this evening and can fill counseling.
So do we normally pay this monthly or quarterly installments, or do we pay it annually?
I don't know. The answer to that, is it annual?
Annual.
And it's just 5% training discount. Do we require a lot of training?
No, not usually. So far, we haven't had a contract that we haven't come out on the good side of the contract. $9,000, I think last year, we had, you know, $15,000 worth of work done on the machine. So it is a very expensive piece of equipment, and there is a lot of travel involved, and all that gets waived once you get the service contract. So we, you know, we've done this multiple years now, and we haven't had a year yet that we didn't more than get our money back from the service contract, so.
So I see that we're scheduled to replace the machine in 2017. At that time, do we look at different vendors and do a bid for that?
Correct. Before this one, we had, I think we had a Fisher brand before this one, and then we had a different one before that one, so.
And then the service fee is part of that bidding process?
When you first get it, there's usually a two-year or a five-year, you know, some length-of-time contract, initial contract with it, just to work out all the bugs, and if you have anything wrong with it, and the training. And then usually, the companies will offer an extended warranty, basically, if you want to buy it. On this one, it definitely has helped us. We had the whole machine replaced two or three years ago. Basically, the only thing we had left was the frame after they were done. They came and put all new parts in it, and they're very delicate and very expensive to fix, so.
And just, if I may, some more food for thought. Staff does not believe going without having a service contract for the balance of the life of the machine would be the prudent recommendation, which is why we are recommending that we put another one on, even though we're looking at replacing it in a couple of years from now, because of the costs involved in maintaining it, sort of having an agreement in place.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I will make a motion to waive competitive bidding on the basic service plan for the PerkinElmer atomic absorption machine, as described. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
You see, Carrie.
And I'll make a motion to award the contract for the two-year extended basic service plan to PerkinElmer in the amount of $18,612. Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
You see, Carrie.
Okay. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item is an update on the evaluation process. There was some conversation at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I think we've already done it.
I'm not sure if there was anything else to add.
Councilmember Stevens, you look flummoxed.
Flummoxed, maybe.
You mean, the update, you mean, was done in the dispatch?
Yeah, basically, just explaining where we were at with it, and that we were going to go back into close session two weeks from now to continue.
Okay, Marcus, do you really need to be understating?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The next item I just simply have labeled as Freedom of Information Act update, and I just wanted to talk for just a moment or two on basically where we're at with respect to the number and type of FOIA requests that we've been receiving those of late. As everybody understands, under state law, there is the right for people to obtain public documents under the Freedom of Information Act. And by no means is the city trying to discourage anybody from using that as a way of getting documentation that isn't otherwise provided either at the front counter or provided on our website or in another public way. But it's important to also understand that at least since the beginning of January of this year, we've received about eight, approximately eight, FOIA requests or Freedom of Information Act requests, which would perhaps be defined as somewhat unusual. You know, they're not requests for accident reports, or requests for, you know, a copy of a permit, or police reports, but for the most part, requests for personnel information, emails, communications, texts, personnel file data on various employees. It's beyond what I would define as normal. Now, that being said, it's still completely 100% legal for people to make these requests. The time and resources that get attributed to then fulfilling them are quite high. I can say that fiscal year to date, so that's going back to July of last year to now, we spent about $20,000 on the fulfilling of these types of requests, which is a hefty number. The time and resources, it doesn't impact just myself or just the city clerk, but it does certainly impact a host of people within our organization that have to, to one degree or another, kind of stop what they're working on because of the timeliness manner and work on fulfilling, getting the data, getting it through. The legal review piece of it is also out there as well. There are, at times, numerous legal issues that need to get looked at when these requests come in. And so it's not a, it's not a simple, "Well, here's, you know, here's the document, and we can just push it out the door." I'm just sharing that with council, with the public, because it is troublesome. It does cause the slowing down, to one degree or another, of our ability of working with the public and working on other projects. Certainly understand that the public has a right to getting public documents, and we do try, I think, very hard to make documents available publicly. There's a very comprehensive amount of documents, of documentation that are available online that people can download in a second. But when we do have this type of information coming forward, it does create some issues. And so I just wanted to take a moment to share. So. There's no action, just...
You mentioned about it, you said it was troublesome that people are doing FOIA?
No, no. What I said was troublesome is that given the nature of these FOIA's, although people certainly have the legal right to ask for documentation, the documentation that they're looking for is unusual. And it's not, you know, like I said, it's not like they're looking for, you know, a form on this particular permit or process, or a form on, you know, a report that would go through, you know, like a police or fire department, that you frequently get to like an insurance company or something for that matter, something that's not normally available to the general public, yet would be a public document, like an accident report or something to that effect. You know, getting or looking for information in personnel files, I think, is somewhat unique. It's not something that you get every day, and I think that it's, at least in my own personal opinion, troublesome. But I'm not saying that people filing FOIA's is troublesome. I think it's a nature of being a public agency. Whether you're a municipality or not, if you're a public agency, that is a right that people have to obtain documentation or try to obtain documentation that isn't otherwise generally available. And so I don't have any problem with the fact that that's anyone's right to do.
One of the things that I heard there, I kind of appreciated that update, and the troublesome thing that I hear there is the $20,000. And that troubles me because legal fees are something that we continuously hear about here at the city. You know, we've talked about those. Legal fees are too high, and $20,000 just in FOIA. I think that it's important for the public to understand the process of FOIA. You know, people might make requests and don't truly understand the resources that it takes to provide some of this documentation. So I think educating folks on that is not a bad thing, because we do want to reduce legal expenses, and that's just one piece of it. I mean, we could shine light on, you know, other things too, I'm sure, but I think for all of us to know that, that's important as we go into planning for the next year, seeing if maybe there's something that we can do to help affect that number.
And just thinking about going into the next year as well, Freedom of Information Act law itself has been amended. There are changes that are going to be coming. I believe they come into effect next July, but I'm holding it at that date. I'm not exactly certain of the date. Right, no, no, but the effectiveness is in the summer. And so we'll be looking at making some changes, perhaps, to our own policy of how we may handle it to make sure that we're in sync with what the state's law requires.
Right, and I don't think that we want to do anything to discourage people to ask for information if we haven't done a good job of putting it out there, and it's something that we feel like we need to be transparent about. But I think that maybe we could be better educators of the FOIA process, maybe be proactive in that, so people understand where to find the information if it's already out there and available to them.
Do municipalities or other public organizations make FOIA requests public?
Not typically. I mean, it's not as if they get FOIA requests, and at the next, say, border council meeting, they say, "This person, this person, this person, this person has submitted these FOIA's, this is what it pertains to." No, that is not typical.
Is it legal to do that?
I don't, I don't think that a FOIA request, I think a FOIA request in writing is in and of itself.
Yeah, the FOIA, the FOIA request.
I think it is a public record in and of itself, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I just wondered if it, you know, maybe it's something that somebody else is looking for, so when they come in, do we just make them public and the response public?
So that somebody who wants to know who's requested what documents, is that...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And post the information on our website or something, and have all of the response there, too.
So it's, it's either posting or the sharing of...
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Are you saying make it get to the individual who...
No, the individual would get it, but then we also post it. Or it could be minutes from a close session meeting, or, I don't know, I don't think there's ever like a drop minutes from a meeting. And then if it's a FOIA, the document, then...
I think all of your minutes are posted on your website, except for close sessions, which are a chance for disclosure. which are a attempt from disclosure. Um, you know, I think some of the FOIA requests...
Expense reports for conference.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't...
Every email ever written from now till eternity. I mean...
And that's not new though. I, I mean, I, I'm hearing him say this, and you got it, Mr. Petrie, you'd understand. I mean, I've been harping about the cost part, not about people doing this, they should, but we've had, I think last year, the years before budget was 60,000 or 70,000. We used to have it done internally. And, and I, I think that's an extremely important point. If we really want to look at lowering the costs is, let's go back and review the process we used to do and the police don't do it. Thankfully, the police says, we're going to keep doing it this way. That would be a cost savings. Um, you, you have mentioned some odd ones this year, but my goodness, I, I've been on here for 15 years and over 15 years, we've gotten requests for emails and we've gotten requests for that. I think there's a, there's a lot of those things that are probably common. Um, and, um, I think the new FOIA laws are looking to try to make it easier for the public. But at the same time, I do agree with the mayor, the cost part is an issue and I think we as a council have a, a big opportunity because we used to do it in-house, the cost is a lot less, and I think that we could save a lot. We'd probably even be able to pay for an additional staff or, or some budgets just by looking at how we handle them internally would be a great discussion point.
And I think, I think it's important though that council understands, we do handle them internally. It's when we receive FOIA's, such as the ones that we've been receiving as of late, even some from last year obviously as well, that open up a whole host of issues, um, that frankly need to have, need to have a higher level of review because of the legal issues that they open up. Um, especially when you're looking at getting, you know, a year's worth or more or less of all communications between a staff member and, and the whole council. I mean, you're talking about, you know, a major, a major, uh, research, tens of thousands of documents that may contain a whole host of different, um, confidential and privileged information that needs to get looked at. So I, I...
It used to be done, that same thing used to be done internally as well, but yes. Although you're probably referring to the main FOIA that's still not...
Yeah, there's, there's, I think, a, um, a good reason as to why you would want to have some of those documents reviewed, uh, not just by your internal staff, but by your attorney. Now, one of the, one of the good things is coming up, coming through as well as, as you mentioned, um, releasing or making it more easy or easier for folks to get information. But you will then be able to charge back, uh, attorney's fees as well to a certain level, uh, so that the review of the documentation as the new law becomes effective, um, will enable municipalities or the public agencies to be able to charge back for some of those fees that they're customary, that I would have charged for. Yeah.
Well, and, but I, I still say as a council and reviewing what we used to do internally and, and I don't know, the same, same request we always have gotten. And, uh, that's one way to, to attack the cost. And, um, I think that would be a, a great avenue to look at is when we start looking, that's half a year's budget. We've had that for years, it's the new implementation. We used to do it internally, there's costing over there high.
I think we need to, um, from a business perspective, um, we need to look at the costs. And, um, I agree with the mayor, you know, maybe we aren't being transparent enough. Obviously, there is some distrust. And I think we need to take a look at ourselves and, um, and say, well, can we do a better job of being more transparent and, uh, and deal with the distress? All businesses work with complaints and FOIA is kind of a, a complaint in somewhat, in some manner. And, um, you know, we can point the finger at the person who filed in the FOIA, but as my father used to say, when you point a finger at somebody, you got three fingers pointing back at yourselves. So I think what we may need to do is take a look at ourselves and our, our, uh, operation and our behavior.
Well, I think to council member Stirling's point, um, if we can find out to what extent we can make that FOIA information available, it may, um, cause some of the duplication of that information, um, from being FOIA'd the second time or third time if we make it available to whoever. And once it's been FOIA'd, it's a public document, it's going to end up somewhere anyway.
You'll have it on file because, um, there's multiple ones. I think, Mr. Petrie might be, last I knew was the main one that was, is that still open, that FOIA request from late May first?
It is, it is. And, and we do maintain a file and offer for, um, Freedom of Information Act records. So should, should a duplicate come in, we can...
What's the main one?
Um, it was a Freedom of Information Act request for about, was it about a year's worth or was it a year and a half? I think about a year and a half worth of communication between me and members of the city council. And so it's resulted in, you know, there's literally tens of thousands of documents that are part of it that are under review. So I believe the challenge is ready to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I don't remember the 20,000.
Yeah. Definitely.
Well, I think that there's, based on the information that Marcus shared, I think that the common theme is that, you know, we all have seen the expense that has, it has cost the taxpayers, the FOIA process has cost, has cost the taxpayers, and I think that we all want to affect that somehow. And so perhaps by making this a more not part of our, our council meeting discussions, we can, um, start deciding how we can do a better job of being more transparent with this information.
And we're looking at the, the hard part is we get, I think they can charge the, you know, the lowest price per hour to do the work. And that's where we're really getting hit on the cost. And we used to be able to take in what we're able to charge to what we're charging, but now when we're able to charge the lowest price per hour and that rate per hour to re, sort of reduce some of that is a lot higher, a lot times higher sometimes.
And I kind of bruised it really quickly, what I've been saying, but it would be interesting to see all points of what has just been trying from those FOIA and what it'll help.
Do we have somebody on staff that does review, um, FOIA's as they come in and, and then they go to the attorney if it looks like there's something that needs to be...
There is, there are several people that review FOIA's. Counselor, when they come in, depending upon their nature, um, before it actually goes to, um, to the FOIA attorney, if you will, um, and takes a look at it. And some, some of them we, we simply just process and we have the, the form letters, if you will, and we just simply process them ourselves, uh, whereas others, we don't. And they, they do go and get another, another review. You know, especially with ones that are, ones that are specifically more broad where, you know, that's when it kind of opens up a potential Pandora's box.
And I'm pretty sure that, um, that was sort of the protocol even in the past with the prior, um, city attorneys, that when something was within the realm of a legal question or that it was passed on to them for review after the onsite review is do that, and that's what we're still doing?
Correct.
But, I mean, I, but anybody can go back and research the same FOIA's have been coming in, but the cost has changed. Internally, we have changed that process that have increased the cost. But you could go back in time and you're going to see a history of the same request. I, I really strongly believe that. I just think the amount that gets sent, that used to be internally done to now is, is a lot. And there's a lot of room in, in our budget, I think, to, to change that by looking at our, our path. You know, I mean, I wanted to talk about that when we got to the budget, but this is a big area.
You know, we, we also have to remember that, um, and we can't change the past, but we also have to remember that there used to be additional resources that we had available to help make some of that happen. So many, when we're at any of the budgeting meetings, budget meetings, we, we need to talk about the reality of that. You know, what we have available now is to what we had back when they were handled the way that you're talking about.
Right.
So, you know, you either invest on the front end or you invest on the back end, which is the best way to go.
Yeah.
But we certainly want our staff to be as productive as they can be, uh, doing, making a difference. And, um, so I think it's something that's really good to keep on in front of us as a council, um, to see how we might positively affect it in some way, shape, or form. So, so thank you. Good discussion.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, Members of the City Council, the next item, um, I would like us to look at, uh, basically picking a couple of dates, uh, for, uh, upcoming, uh, work sessions. In your packet, uh, we have the listing, um, of a few dates in February. To that, um, I would like to add actually a couple of more under the first section, looking at, um, having a, another goal-setting work session of, um, March 3rd or 5th, um, or even looking at, um, maybe February 27th at 4:30, uh, possibly early your start, if that'll work.
30 and Friday, anniversary. I'm available March 6th.
Okay.
Out of all those dates.
Okay.
Out of all of these, yep.
Can I, I notice on all of these dates, I remember that was one of the questions when we switched these meetings to six. We talked about, well, we used to do a lot of these prior to the meeting and are we still going to be able to because it's six? And at the time, the, you know, at least we were told that, yeah, we could still do them, but just start those earlier. But I noticed none of these just start maybe an hour earlier for council. Um, you know, starting at like at four or something and that helped if we were sitting on the council night but just starting earlier or is that...
30 or five? March 2nd?
Which the work session was.
For me, for, for staff.
I mean, I can make any of those.
Yeah, I can too.
But I, I just sit down like at the budget and the capital improvement and none of them are on those dates.
No, and that's, and that was, we did that intentionally thinking that you guys didn't want to start that early. We can do that.
So a goal-setting for March 2nd?
March 2nd.
At what time?
We just start 4:30.
I said 4:30, I don't know if...
4:30 is about as soon as I could get there.
Yeah.
Does that work for you guys?
If that works, 30 and a half.
Yes, that would work, me guess.
Okay. The, um, the next bit is, is just a point of reference and then we're looking at, um, getting at least another, um, work session date in, um, the 9th, the 10th, to the 12th. But if we do the, um, those on the 2nd, do you have any preference?
No, it's up to council. I mean, we can make ourselves available anytime. If they would like to meet on council meeting nights, then we'd be happy to do that.
16th. Does that work for guys, for you guys?
Uh, we could, mm-hmm. Before the council meeting or the capital improvement work session?
Well, the, right, the, the next, the work session and the, or the public hearing and the capital improvement would occur either on the 16th or the, the 6th. Those are the current council meeting dates. March 16th, we would have a work session at 4:30.
And then April 6th, we would have a...
Right.
Public hearing?
Presumably.
Okay. Wait, I'm confused.
Okay. So we're going to have a work session at 4:30 on March 16th?
For...
For capital.
No, for goals.
What is goals to?
16th.
No, no, no.
No.
March 2nd would be the goals.
March 2nd, goals.
16th would be the 6th.
16th is capital.
But the cap, there's a public hearing on it.
No, that'll be moved to the, that'll be moved to the 6th.
Right.
Duh. Got it. I wasn't confused. Okay.
And then we could have, um, as a part of, as a part of, um, looking forward, we would then set up another work session on the budget as well. I mean, the, the, the capital budget is part of the budget, so, but we would also have another work session on that.
That's what's confusing me. Okay, so...
Sorry.
4:30 on the 2nd and 4:30 on the 16th?
And the 2nd is goal-setting and the 16th is capital improvement?
Capital and budget.
And budget.
We'll get into the budget as well.
Okay. And then you want to schedule another one?
We can or you can schedule back on the 16th when we have a better idea as far as how your timing is working.
So the budget then?
If you want, if you want.
I mean, you're doing, you, the capital improvement, yours, we're doing and proving separately. Are you saying we're going to prove them together?
The capital, the capital improvement plan doesn't require any approval from the council. We typically, uh, bring it forward to the city council, but it's part of your budget. When you approve your budget, that's when you're approving the capital improvement plan, so...
Yeah, that, that's not how we've done it in the past, Marcus, I'm sorry. We've always, yeah, we...
No, we've done it separately in the past, but it's, there's no legal requirement though.
No.
But that's what you're saying April 6th, right? Was it that the April 6th is going to be a public hearing for the capital improvement?
Right.
And then the budget would be after that?
Right. I think where I confused you and perhaps other people, and I apologize if I did so, was when I mentioned when we bring the capital forward on March 16th, we may also get into some other general budget conversations.
But then we still have another budget meeting.
But if we were doing this, just starting from the 16th.
Okay, okay.
And I was just trying to make sure that you guys connect the dots, that the, the capital budget is not a separate document, it's part of our overall city budget.
So we don't want to set the next budget work session, um, date until the 16th? Or do we want to set it?
You can set it now.
Let's set it.
So you look at the first meeting in April, which would be...
The 6th?
The 6th.
For budget, work session. Okay.
So we're looking at March 2nd, March 16th, and April 6th, all at 4:30 starts?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good.
How do we start it on the calendar?
Is that, I know usually our budget, sometimes that turns into more than one with an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we got time because we don't do that till May. We can't even approve it really till May anyhow.
Right, right. So we would have...
But do you, are you...
I could come around.
Are you sort of seeing, I know in the past, we, every year we get a separate capital improvement package.
You're still getting that.
Okay.
I was just trying to say, depending upon time and where we go, maybe we'll get into some other conversations as well. So it was just food for thought, it wasn't...
Right.
Nothing other than...
Changing everything forever, amen?
No.
Good, thanks. Okay.
Awesome.
Okay. So, um, we're going to need a motion to schedule the, uh, work session based on what we just talked about. A motion to schedule a work session on March 3rd, no, say 2nd, oops, at 4:30. Do we have to do each one separately or can we do them all?
No.
2nd at 4:30.
Oh, you want me to do these all?
Yeah, go get them all.
I already put my calendar away.
I've got it. March 16th at 4:30 and one at March 16th at 4:30 and one on April 6th at 4:30. Support.
Sandy, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Tippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Phil?
Yes.
We're taking care of it. And now we have introduction of ordinances and resolutions.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Uh, the first item, uh, is looking to adopt a resolution and introduce an ordinance that's going to help set the public hearing from March 16th, 2015, uh, for the lease agreement that the city has, State of Michigan, for the DEQ building. Um, again, all we're doing is seeing... Um, again, all we're doing this evening is setting the public hearing. Uh, we have been working with, um, with the state of Michigan's real estate division for quite some time now and, and kind of getting some details worked out on a lease, um, extension. Their lease ends April 30th of 2016. They have indicated a very strong desire to stay locally. Uh, they are looking for some adjustments to the, to lease, which we do feel to be reasonable. Uh, we do have those details in your packet, um, and they are looking at a 20-year extension. And so, um, we're recommending that we do it by ordinance, uh, and that we set the public hearing, uh, for March 16th accordingly.
Marcus, are they planning on giving up any of that space?
They are not, to the best of my knowledge.
So, they want to stay in that whole facility offload?
And there are, um, there are a number of workers, you know, that are in that building. They are using the space. I was in there last winter, and every milk and cranny.
I thought that there wasn't, was there? As we used to do?
It's possible that they may have reduced their numbers, but they're still using, they're still using the space. The way that the building was laid out, it was specific to their purpose or to their needs. Um, so there isn't, um, there wasn't really like a shared hallway or accessway. We had some conversation about, well, is there a feasible way of separating the building out?
I knew we had had some discussion about that.
Yeah, creating, you know, uh, uh, an additional space to, to, we even took a, an architect to, uh, to try to get some, some feedback on, on what that might be. Uh, and really based upon the way the building itself was, was designed initially and for the use it was designed for, uh, it's a one-tenant, it's a one-tenant building. Um, and the cost of retrofitting it to create separate areas would really be expensive.
I really like the idea of getting a 20-year commitment for them.
Mm-hmm. It'd be nice to keep that, keep that use and to keep all of those folks in the downtown.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, what you'll be approving, though, it's in two phases. So, the first phase is a six-year phase, and that's the only confirmed commitment that they're making. And then there is an option then for another 15. In our discussions, they've said they want to be there that whole time. Um, there's also, you know, 120-day cancellation clause in there. So, I mean, basically, they could, um, which they have in there now. But they've indicated their desire to stay that long. But in, an approval of the addendum approves that first six-year term, which is from April 1st of this year through March 31st of 2021.
Well, thanks for that clarification. I, I think it's hard to commit anything for that long with three at a time, but... Make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance number 2015-05 to approve addendum to the sublease to the state of Michigan, a real property located at 120 East Chapin Street, and set a public hearing. I don't know if it's East Chapin or not. I should just say Chapin. It might be West.
I believe it's West, yeah.
West, the other side of Michigan. Yeah, and set a public hearing for March 16th, 2015.
Support.
Sandy, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. We're seeing Kerry.
Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, this next item is the request to reschedule the public hearing for the sale of vacant land at 606 East North Street to March 16th, 2015. There is a secondary publication requirement that we realized last week was not met. Um, when we sell public land, not only are we required to post it, or publish it rather, 20 days in advance, which we do in other situations, but there's a secondary requirement for a 10-day posting, which we failed to do. Uh, and so in order to rectify that, we need to reset the public hearing accordingly. All parties have been noticed and advised as well.
Okay, can we have a motion to adopt? I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution rescheduling the public hearing for ordinance number 2015-03 to sell vacant property located at 606 East North Street and set a public hearing from March 16th, 2015. Smart. Sandy, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. We're seeing Kerry.
Okay, uh, then we have the minutes of boards and commissions. This evening, we have meeting notes for the City/Caps Recreation Plan Advisory Board that we can read during the...
Give me a second. I have a question here.
Oh, sure.
Was there some minutes, Mr. Petcher, of the, uh, the recreation board? And are we, is that filled? Are we, was there any staffs? I don't remember if the city actually had any appointments we had to do with that, or if that was all, um, already, like, those groups were already in that committee and it was just their representation, but...
Are you asking if there's any vacancies?
I don't know, vacancies or if we got to do any...
That's our pleasure to see.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I saw that coming up, and I think it's our first time getting the minutes, and just wanted to make sure we didn't have any left or anything in terms of...
I, I can find out and share it with council.
Thank you.
And that is going to the planning commission first, and then they'll let you come up. So, thank you.
Yeah, it was interesting reading those minutes. The committee members that are on there, it sounds like they made some really good suggestions. So, that was really good to hear. And then there was the suggestion from, to have some additional members. And that is good also.
That would be a really interesting group to be part of. Not that they're not all interested. Okay. Um, then, uh, we at this time will open the floor again for public comment. See, no one will close public comment. And move to go to the order. Councilmember Stevens?
Um, a couple of quick things I wanted to, uh, actually, I think I've got enough copies. I wanted to pass on to council, um, it was again one of those little things you could suppose. I happened to, in a conversation in Lansing, and went that, I didn't notice, but I'm seeing that we just recently approved that construction board of appeals, and we've been working on this with the state, and wasn't aware that we had gotten denied on this in January.
I did communicate that, by the way, with the city council. Oh, I'm sorry if you missed it.
I know, I didn't get that one. But I was wondering how that's going to affect our, uh, we just put that construction board in, and, and, uh, was surprised that we, we...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I just...
I feel a little blindsided by how you're just passing this out in this fashion. Sorry, I apologize.
I was a little blindsided to find that out, and, and was concerned that we didn't meet those conditions since we brought it to the state, and just was curious how we were going to move forward in terms of, we just did a board of appeals for this and how that's going to go forward and what we have to do to move this to the next level. But, uh...
We're made to resubmit.
Is that, like, once a price a year that allow that?
There was no timing that they, that they provided that I can recall off the top of my head. In fact, in fact, there was no timing that they gave us to begin with, um, with respect to providing them with, uh, the names of the board members for the board that we created and other documents that we're trying to come, come by in order to fulfill all of the, the state's boards' needs. They simply acted autonomously from, from perhaps how they should be and doing what they did. But they're made to resubmit accordingly, and, and hopefully they'll accept it.
Yes, thank you. And additionally, I wanted to think if anybody got to participate in the Stunna Grill Festival. Another example of the volunteers, um, that participated in the amount of activity was phenomenal. But just to give a little, you know, um, a thanks again to all the volunteers. Some like, event like that, it's amazing how many people and groups and organizations that, that make that possible. But it looked like it was a, a great success, and definitely wanted to give them our appreciation. And then, um, I think, uh, Councilmember Malama, it sounds like your coffee dealers, you had a good, good one going there, Berkey's, they had about three people calling compliment on, uh, the discussion that was there. So, I don't know what exactly occurred, but everybody was happy and, and thankful for, um, that meeting with you and then with staff members. Mr. Dietlin got some big kudos as well for, uh, whatever you did there, but I wanted to just pass that on to you. Thank you.
Councilmember Malama?
Yeah. Um, first thing I'd like to start out with is the good of the order. And, um, I've received a lot of phone calls and, um, on how we do the good of the order. Um, as far as, um, I know that probably 95 to 99% of the time, either I start out or Mr. Stevens. And I know that when we vote, we do it on a rotation basis. Sandy does a wonderful job of keeping a rotation basis so that we, uh, always have a different order. And, uh, I, I would like to see that in the good of the order, so that we, uh, we have a rotation basis so that it's not always, uh, certain people leading off and, and then some people responding. I think that would take a lot of the politics out of it. And, um, I think, uh, that it's in order. It makes sense. If we do, uh, voting on a rotation basis, we should do our good of the order in a rotation basis, so that, um, it's not always, uh, two of us leading off first and then, um, somebody hitting a home run and doing the cleanup. So, I'd like to see that changed. Um, I don't think it's etched in stone. I don't think we need to always do that. And I think that would be, uh, that would give, uh, even Mr. Petcher and the mayor an opportunity to go first or second, or third, or fourth, depending upon the order. And I'd like to see that. Um, second thing is, is that, uh, I want to thank people that worked on the snow fest in the city on a wonderful job. They did a super, super job. It looked like, uh, excellent weather, much better than last weekend, thank goodness. Uh, last weekend was something else, uh, but, uh, great job, great job, staff and volunteers. Um, our next CAMA meeting is March 10th. It will be at Rex Taylor, and it will be a regional MMA, uh, CAMA meeting. And, uh, it should be very, very good. It'll be a legislative update on what's going on. Uh, we had an excellent turnout at our last CAMA meeting at Cadillac Fabrications. Um, and, uh, it was an excellent article, thank you, Rick, on, on what took place. Excellent advice, an attorney firm gave us on, um, personnel issues. And then, uh, also on the issues and, uh, solutions, coffee problems, issues, whatever. Uh, we had an excellent turnout, uh, second, uh, second month in a row. Um, and, uh, we had, I don't know, anywhere from eight to 10 people there. And, uh, some of the issues were, uh, definitely the rental association. I know, uh, Mike Pollan has made, uh, sent me an email that he had sent to Marcus. He copied me, uh, about attending the next meeting with our fire marshal. And I know, uh, he responded back that you will be attending because there are some concerns. And that's the second time that has come up. And then, uh, Jeff was there, uh, as, as Art had mentioned. And we talked about the water again, and we talked about, and, and it looks like we're gaining there. And we had a very, very good discussion, uh, on that. And, uh, so it was a very, very meaningful, uh, session we had. And I want to thank Gary and Jeff for attending. Uh, good job. Uh, people had reiterated again that, uh, it's an opportunity. Not everybody wants to stand up in front of the camera and, uh, speak in front of the, and speak in front of us. But they still have issues, uh, they still have questions, I should say. So, um, yeah, it was good. And thank you to the two ladies in the back for attending. I think they really appreciate the hot cup of coffee and, uh, the lively discussion.
The muffin can, you know, you brunch.
Yeah, always up in the ante. Thank you, gals, for coming each time, too, and sharing.
Okay, councilmember Sheppers?
Um, thanks. Um, let's see. I would like to first thank our, um, our representative from, of the new interim director for CWTA for that wonderful presentation tonight. It looks like the CWTA is in good hands, and I look forward to many years of growth and service to the community with that. Second of all, on Wednesday, will be a youth council meeting right here in these chambers, um, beginning at 4:00 PM. And we will have a full council here. We're, we have our mayor designated and, uh, other members, and we're going to be having a, some kind of a swearing-in kind of ceremony. And I'd like to invite members of the community to come to that and check out some of Cadillac's finest young folks willing to step up and participate in the community and in, um, youth issues within our community. So, I'd like to invite everybody to that, and that is all.
From Miss Spur?
I just have a thank you to Barb Johns. I just wanted to join in with the rest of you and, uh, let her know how much we appreciate her service on the board of review. And, um, yes, she's just a great all-around lady, good community spirit. And also to Kerry Thompson from the CWTA. It, it's good to see somebody who is seemingly on top of their game in the field that they're in. And it's always nice to have, uh, you know, some new eyes looking at a program with, with some potential enhancements. I like that. Public transportation is a very important, um, service to a lot of people. And, uh, it's good to do some planning around that. I really like some of her ideas. I'll get that, I'll start. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanted to first mention that the Cobb's and Mitchell Committee had a meeting. We're looking at brainstorming essentially some ideas for, um, potential uses for the building, should it not be successful in selling. Uh, would like to certainly extend, um, that to everybody around the table here. If you have any ideas, no matter how off the wall it might be, um, feel free to, you know, pop me an email. Um, if you have an idea, uh, again, no matter how off the wall it might be, along with a potential idea of how to fund it. It would also be great if you could share that mechanism as well. Um, that is something that we're going to, you know, need to try to find some solutions to. Uh, we are looking at bringing in, um, a planner with Networks Northwest. Uh, additionally, we'll be looking at bringing in, um, a representative or two from the MEBC and maybe from similar agencies that could try to help us match some, some funding. Uh, but the question will be, is matching funding to what? And so, you know, right now, um, as I've stated before, the building is, uh, owned and held privately, and we certainly wish that person much success in looking at, uh, in looking at developing it and selling it. And we're just simply coming up or brainstorming some ideas should that, you know, should that not happen. Um, additionally, I wanted to, uh, to mention publicly a great thanks to our public works department. They...
They really, I think, did a tremendous job over the weekend in clearing the roads. They're trying some different techniques in, in getting our limited equipment and resources out there, especially in what obviously you could consider blizzard-type conditions, and I think it's remarkable how they've been able to open up the main arteries, you know, curb to curb. I think it's done a, a very great job in a, in a very short period of time. So, those are my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have the opportunity to participate in closing things at the Snowmobile Festival, and it was a huge success. Cherry Grove Event Center needs to grow, however, if they're going to put it out there again because it was packed to the rouse, and the parking was a, was a real challenge, but everyone that was there was having a great time. And I was actually serving winning chili, Lakeside Chili's, one with chili cook-off. They had 16 different chilis this year, and it was pretty fantastic. And the second place chili was at our table too, and that was the Ketten Center. So, thank you to all of those people that are involved in the many, many hours to plan it and to pull it off. It was a long weekend for them. Mr. Malama, the suggestion that you had for good of the order, I've actually been thinking about the good of the order, and I've always done the good of the order the way that I had always adored it to be, in that the council members always spoke first, and then Marcus, and then the mayor, and I thought it was, it was a respect thing, giving other council members the opportunity to speak first. I don't tend to look at it, or haven't tended to look at it in the way that you have, and I'm sorry that you have looked at it that way. But if we want to do it randomly, I am really okay with that, so that it's not your perception or anyone else's perception, that that's how it's being handled. But I've also thought about the good of the order, rather than it just having to have everybody say something, that perhaps we just open the floor for the good of the order, and then whoever has something, has an update that they would like to provide, they raise their hand and they provide it. But not everybody should have to feel like they have to say something if they don't have anything. So. So that's all I had to say. So at this time, we are going to need a motion to go into closed session?
That looks like fun. I'll do that. Okay, go ahead. Please go ahead. For those of you who don't know, I'm talking about just waiting for you to hear this. I'll make a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss certain pending civil litigation in the case of charter township of hearing versus the city of Cadillac and Donald and Gloria Borzma. Wexford County Circuit Case Number 13-24606-CH. Court of Appeals Case Numbers 318-174, 318-175, 318-821, and 318-823. Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
Could we have a? No. Keep that one. Okay, could we have a motion to return to open session? I'll make a motion to return that to open session? Mark? Sandy, could we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkin?
Yes.
And then at this time, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Good deal.